Help us all to get through this pandemic. Thank you for the commissioner, thank you for calling and telling us and D O and everybody that worked so hard to serve you by serving our citizens here. Be with us and lead us and guide us and direct us and use this family.
Thank you.
Uh, listen, we did, uh, we're in the
Commission District One, are you ready? Good morning.
Good morning, yes sir, we have two items from the Public Works Community Services and Governmental Relations Committee. First item is the Gulf Coast Underground LLC and this is regarding a structural defect, identification and replacement. Uh, excuse me, we have item number two, C M B piping. This is about an L dot permit on Highway seventy-eight. Do we have any questions concerning either of these items?
I do, item one, we're spending six million dollars to identify structural defects and I saw where it's first time of life. About a hundred years and we've never expected some parts of it, is that what this is?
So, yeah, this is day of dinner, um, so, um, well, we had, we had seven hundred miles, you know, reason for unification, but, yeah, we took over twenty-four hundred miles and there would be two thousand. So, um, what we're calling first time, basically, once we don't have actual T V guns. We did some early on, the consent decree, it was a whole lot less quality and everything else. So, we're, we're probably eighty percent through getting through the whole system. Our, our goal is actually T V the system every fifteen years, so it's getting to that first part of the program, so. But the six million dollars includes inspection and the bulk of that money actually goes to rehabilitation and doing the lineups and fixing pipe as opposed to the inspection part of it.
Move item one and two.
Okay, we have a motion to move items one and two. All those in favor, let it be known by signing aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have two grants, as a matter of fact, I have a third that is through the system, uh, which is the Danan Project as well. And so, Mr. President, if you will oblige, um, I'm gonna make sure that I give you all the paperwork so, uh, we can come back to that third item, but it has gone through the system. Uh, this is in regards to a program, uh, that the Danan Project will be providing, uh, to the school system. So, uh, item number one is for Carver High School Athletics. Item number two is for Midfield High School Athletics. Do we have any questions in regards to those two items? Both are, uh, in the amount of five thousand dollars each.
Move one and two.
Items one and two, do I have a second? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, it said been seconded, uh, and has been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And, uh, I would also like to, uh, Mr. President, if we could come back, if you don't mind, um, uh, for that last item of Danan, so you know exactly what you will, uh, hopefully support today. And, uh, and then the last thing that we have is, uh, we'll talk about it, I really appreciate the county manager, uh, for assisting with the site, this and Joe and I, uh, in our district, uh, for the vaccination. Uh, the U A B is in partnership with, so I wanted to at least tell you thank you for that as well, uh, and I can talk a little bit more about that later. Thank you, Mr. President, and don't forget about the Danan Project item, it's gonna be in the amount of seven thousand dollars, uh, I asked that they have for a program that they're trying to provide to school.
If that's in the system and should be finished by Thursday.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, uh, I know that it's already at Melon now, so it will be ready, Mr. President, for, um, uh, approval for Thursday. So, we're already at that point, it's not, my point is just that we didn't get it to the, the actual, this agenda, but it's already through the system.
Would you say it's four?
Uh, it is a musical program that they are offering, it's a cultural arts program that they are offering to the school system. Um, they asked for ten, but we agreed to do seven.
I'll move it to the, you know, because they had to, sorry.
Okay, the item has been moved and seconded to go for unanimous consent, and I'm sure, do we have to have a roll call, Mr. President?
Oh, no, you refind after any of both, is what we, if there's no both, you're good.
Okay, all right, so does that mean that the item is already here or?
I approve yours too.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you, and I'll give you the paperwork.
I'll move item second.
Okay, has been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye, and that issue forward to be discussed, okay?
I'll move it to the, to the, to the.
Okay, well, good, and then I'll still make sure you have the paperwork, thank you.
Okay, me and you have something about human resource.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, the problem of community service and workforce development, Dr. Hamilton, please.
Good morning, everybody.
You always just show up, you just say.
Uh, the first item is a resolution by the Commissioner President to execute modification number two, to the, to the twenty, um, agreement with the Department of Labor for our own, the jobs training program, O J T, basically, um, A, uh, L dot, I'm sorry, uh, A D O L serves as the, uh, paying agent, uh, for these businesses, and we just simply want to extend the agreement until June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Does this just need to be cut, uh, to COVID?
That's correct.
Not being able to do it?
That's correct.
Will we even get a return on this?
We are, uh, we're, and a lot of businesses are, are actually getting reimbursed for their training of people, so they have, they try to come and buy, and then can be reimbursed up to fifty to seventy-five percent. Uh, the second item is, is the same thing, it's just for our nineteen program and extended it to twenty twenty-one. Number three, uh, is a D R I loan write-off for Deborah Frager. Uh, this was in reference to the target of the Hitt-Jepsen family in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, she has passed away and, uh, so the balance of her loan is, is not collected. Number four, we just added a hundred thousand dollars to our roofing contract, so this is whenever, whenever people call in and need assistance with roof, we just refer them to our roofing contract, which is S and W Construction. And the last item is for Mary Williams, a satisfaction of mortgage, uh, it was for a C B G D R I, I'm going back to the nineteen ninety-eight target, and she's paid that company.
I'll move one through five.
Second. Second person in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you, uh, we have to go all the way down to my, um, uh.
I'll move the grant.
Second.
I would like to add a, uh, items for community affairs committee, eighteen thousand dollar grant. Uh, the paperwork is being processed through the system, and I would like to see if we can get this fast and move it to the Thursday.
What are you, what is, when is so much adding?
There's a community grant going to community affairs committee.
Who's?
And I would like to get this moved to our Thursday.
Who, who is that?
It's the, uh, the C A C, it's the same organization that actually does the, uh, unity, uh, reference for Monica King, but they also do other events within the, uh, city and the county.
I'll move that we move for unanimous consent to move forward, second.
It's been first and second, did I get a second?
Yes.
Are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Either, either one or both. Aye.
Thank you, I, I'm, take one second, uh, President, I want y'all to look at the paperwork that, that, um, Michael brought in to you, Mr. Miller.
Hey, you, you still have to vote on it, you should.
Doctor Miller, okay, all, all in favor, say aye.
Now, what, what you do, you, you did unanimous consent, which guided on the agenda, now, uh, or guided consideration, now you need to put place on the agenda.
Step aside, y'all, I'm not in the room, so I can't hear.
I'll, I'll, I'll move it, I'll move it pending, pending the process.
Second.
It's been first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so I, if you look at your paperwork that I have, that Mike brought in there to you, look at the last page, all of these are the, uh, shot clinics, we are adding them every day. If you look at your last page, we actually added, uh, we're adding C P, we have C P S, Ross Bridges, uh, and several other, uh, pharmacies that we are adding. So, you will probably give a list, or an additional to the list every day. We have over twelve hundred sites that were offered, uh, Cathedral of the Cross, uh, and so many churches offer their facility to, uh, be provided as a shot site. So, as they go down, uh, the health department is going out to the sites, seeing which site qualified for it, because all sites don't, and then we don't leave, uh, shot clinics next door to shot clinics. They have a range on, uh, which way and, and, and the direction and the distance that they want the clinics. They are still pulling off, the list is almost two hundred thousand people on the waiting list, they are pulling off of that end, they're still taking, uh, uh, appointments from the phone line and from out of the waiting. So, you will receive a updated li- list at least once a week as we add the clinics. I asked all of the commissioners if you had a site that, uh, you would like, and they, they would consider that site also. So, you will get a list every week.
Uh, Commissioner Tyson, and I'm glad that you stated that, the, the U A B site that, uh, is over at Cathedral of the Cross, uh, that we worked to get, I know that they are providing the.
Every, this, this shots got here.
Okay.
On the list because they was a vaccine, they was a test inside.
So, this, right now, uh, this particular, uh, this is different, that's why I was thanking you, uh, Mr. Tellus, for, uh, working with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, basically, in short, I wanted to make sure this is just for public consumption, because this is a public meeting, uh, that, uh, when, uh, we coordinated our efforts with U A B, because of the fact that U A B is getting the vaccines, uh, that is, is gonna be slightly different than some of the things that are going on now, and so I just wanted to make sure that we brought that clarification. Bishop, um, Wright and I have been working very hard together to make sure, uh, that that area, uh, along with Joe, to make sure that we facilitated, and so I just wanted to make sure, just to, uh, for the public consumption, uh, that, that the vaccines that they have are, is what U A B is getting directly. And then, you know, if something else is added on, uh, to that poster factor, we'll definitely make sure that everyone knows, so I really appreciate that update, thank you.
Uh, I would like to say something, uh, we are working with Dr. Natalie Seener and have been working with Dr. Lam, seeing from the first vaccines that they received. U A B is getting fifteen thousand vaccines a week, so you will find that, uh, U A B will be giving, getting more clinics than any of the other facilities. Uh, then Kahaba is next in line, they are getting theirs directly from the federal government, but U A B is getting theirs from, directly from the state, they are getting more vaccines from the state than any clinic, uh, in, really in the state of Alabama. Kahaba has clinics all over the state of Alabama, they have five in Jefferson County, so they're getting their, their, uh, vaccines directly from the federal government, along with Price Health Center and several of the other clinics that's getting theirs directly from the federal government. Congress Walter Sewell came down, she increased the vaccine delivery by the week for the federal, uh, funded clinics, that's why they will be getting more, uh, vaccines, but they still will not get fifteen thousand vaccines. So, that's why you will see U A B at more of the, uh, the more of the sites than you would any of the other clinics. We have a weekly hall that I meet with the U A B doctors, uh, U A B alone with, uh, Dr. Mark Wilson at the Jefferson County Health Department, uh, Walter Jackson is also on the call, and, uh, it'd be several of us on the call, uh, organizing these clinics. And I'm gonna thank y'all for participating and actually trying to make sure that we have our vaccines throughout Jefferson County. And you will receive another update, every week we add clinic, it will be an update, so like I said, a lot of the churches that's on here, they have been on their blessed growth, will be receiving a, uh, a clinic also, so a lot of the clinics you will see bonding up, it's from the very beginning, we had twelve hundred sites on the list, so we're not leaving out anyone. So, it's twelve hundred sites, and they just gotta be approved, they are not gonna use all of the sites, thank y'all so much.
Hey, Commissioner. Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, sir.
Don't forget your town.
Puritown was getting ready to come up, they went out and took pictures of Puritown, and they're getting ready and getting prepared to give Puritown their vaccine.
Yeah, and they already approved the storm shelter, the storm health.
They, they will, you will find that out today.
Okay.
Went out and looked at the site and everything.
All right, so we got those that's coming from the state to U A B and to, I guess, the health department, right?
They're going from U A B to the health department, to the, to the, uh, neighborhood pharmacy, that's where the state, most of the shots are going to. Majority of the federal health clinics are, are going, they're getting theirs directly from the federal government, like Kahaba, Price, uh, uh, they're being all theirs from the federal government. Cooper Green is getting ready to open up their shot clinic also, Cooper Green Clinic, they're getting ready to open up their shot clinic. So, uh, I know, uh, Commissioner, you asked also Commissioner Knight about, uh, a shot clinic, you have been giving me your list, it's about nine times out of ten, the churches are already on the list, so once you, uh, uh, give us the O A, they will go out and see who qualifies to be a vaccine site. So, we're not leaving out anyone.
No, I understand, and the Wal-Mart's and the C V S's, those are direct from the feds, aren't they?
Uh, directly from the feds.
Okay.
And they are, and some of them are getting Johnson and Johnson, and that's at one shop, they're getting Johnson and Johnson, uh, Walmart is same. And I would like for y'all, one day, we can go and tour a couple of the sites, I would like, like that also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, that carries us down to the.
Yeah, we've been heard out of one particular agenda, I don't think we voted on it. We did, we did, we did vote on it.
Yeah.
The, the law component, yeah, yeah, we did that, and then, and then we'll, you go.
All right, this is a, an instructional committee for those of transportation, uh, we have items hydroengineering, B A K, geoscience, as technical systems, and Caldwell Mill Road and Double Looney Mill Road, acceptance and street maintenance at Meadow Ridge, maybe don't keep it low. One through four.
Second.
Second, all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, number five, you need street maintenance, acceptance from Meadow Ridge? You need explanation on that?
Do what?
You need, for next number five?
That's another failed subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, it was supposed to be in the last meeting, there was space one and two, you operated last time, and Dave got messed up on this one, kicked it to the day.
Okay, where is that? Meadow Ridge, can you tell them where Meadow Ridge subdivision is? You there, Heather?
Hold on, Secretary.
I got it. We got Geo Techno Engineering, Caricon, while they're looking for that, that's with Grants Mill Road project, uh, the West End Health Center, which is gonna be good news, that's the, uh, surplus property, uh, pump station upgrades, uh, P S O three, uh, Alabama Power and Transit Relocation on Springdale Road Bridge Replacement. Uh, I didn't know, which Springdale Road is that?
Okay.
Or that one there, that, that, terrible, you tell me, okay, been on the books for about forty-seven years. All right, good seat, moving in, Bryant Park School Road Improvement Purchase Disclosure, and then we have one, two, three, four, actually, we have five memorandums of understanding for debris removal. Uh, for whatever reason, Brookwood was submitted at the same time, and, uh, Brookside, not Brookwood, Brookside was submitted at the same time, and, uh, it's been executed, ready to go, and I need to add it as an item of new business.
And this is in the system, oh.
It's already in the system and everything, just.
I'll move for unanimous consent.
Second. Second.
Motion made in second for unanimous consent, all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? No both, if you're going. All right, um, I'll move five through fourteen plus Brookside.
Five through fourteen plus Brookside, second, aye.
Second.
Seconded, um, Mr. Tyson and Scales, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask you a question on seven?
Yeah, me too.
Um, so, we're just declaring it as, as service, which takes to another process.
To, to seven, that's correct.
To sell, so we have to go to seven, seven two, if there's anything other than that.
Uh, we, we've done the due diligence on that, but it has to be, uh, we have to vote on this today before we can bring the sale to you, and this is, this is the clinical waste thing.
Do we have, um, the price already?
Yes, yes, mhm, and, uh, we sent a package to all of your offices last week.
Yeah, I thought I'd say.
Yeah, and the, uh, uh, we're not selling it, you know, hopefully, we can bring it up as new business, Monday, we get the deed done before Thursday, I'm sorry, before Thursday, so we'll sell it. Price is four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Has that been appraised?
Uh, yes.
Is that the appraisal price?
The, uh, we, we're looking.
Did, did, did we have to put it out for, for bid, I mean, because I, we, we had a similar situation where we tried to sell some property that was, you know, I just wanna make sure that the same process, all the hoops that we had to go through to sell a piece of property in Fultonville, uh, that we followed in those same steps.
Well, what we could do, uh, is, once we get this done, you know what I mean?
Yeah, all, all those put down.
Uh, all those put down.
Okay. Perhaps we need to.
It'll take about a year to do that.
Yeah, perhaps we need to look at the process that was followed this time and adopt it looking forward.
Well, it's, it's, uh, the problem with that issue that you had, the appraisal value was higher than what the buyer wanted. Uh, the value of this building is, is, is actually more than what the market in the area is, it's, we're, we're, uh, we'll be selling this at eighteen twenty-five a foot, in, in that area, the market's from eleven dollars to sixteen dollars a square foot.
I just, I just wanna, um, I just want to make sure that we're fair across the board in how we approach these things, and, uh, if there's some kind of internal issues that, that maybe provide some roadblocks, then I'd like to eliminate those. Okay, uh, county attorney, we have, uh.
By the way, that, that business got blown away. Was one, I didn't do that.
That business got blown away in the tornadoes.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
And that could start all over again, we can sell it back to.
No, it's our report, thanks.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, for the due vote. Uh, we have minutes from our commission meeting on today, March eleventh, so, so, I'll probably say aye.
Aye.
We have one item of new business that will be coming out of the county attorney's office that will require unanimous consent, uh, for the COVID lead benefits to be extended to June the thirtieth under the same terms and conditions as they exist now.
So, that?
With unanimous consent, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? No opposition, so it's unanimous consent, so, COVID lead benefits extended June the thirtieth under the same terms and conditions.
And when do they expire presently?
Into this month.
Right, thirty-first, thirty-first, this will be the last meeting and opportunity.
I move that.
Second.
Motion will be made in second, all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, any of both, pass unanimously. Uh, we have a one acknowledgement from the Sheriff's Department for legal services, um, requested amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, is for the Ken Perry Law Firm. Motion move it to the agenda.
Yeah, but I, it's transformational purposes, we stand up the vote on it, okay.
I, I vote that I acknowledge it. Yeah, we, if we acknowledge it, it's a move to the agenda, everything requires, say, now, second, my motion, second, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Move it to the agenda, uh, and I apologize for these, uh, of them that we have, we have, uh, resolutions to submit for the purchase of land in Shady Grove, Alabama, or, or Shady Grove Road, uh, offering to, the state of Alabama are offering to purchase land owned by the state adjacent to the Shady Grove Fire Department for a hundred dollars. If the offer is accepted, the county staff will be engaged, purchase property, transfer it to the fire department for expansion.
How, how much we getting for a hundred dollars?
Oh, I, I don't know.
What would be?
No, it's, it's actually, uh, it, it tax sales, it's tax sales and that the, uh, state has, and they will transfer it to the county for one hundred dollars, and it's, it's a, it's a pretty good little size, yeah.
I would, I would.
No pun intended, it's fire sale?
It's fire sale.
Well, I would like to know where it is, and then are we fixing to incur a liability?
I don't like to, we're giving, during.
We're gonna turn it over.
Elijah's saying that, but it, you know, they had, they just got hit with a D F one torn aim, is that, is it, are we checking sense for it?
Uh, like a brock?
Okay.
And this is actually an offer according to Chris, it's notified the state, we, we intend to, I think the state's considering another offer now, if they come back to us, then we'll go through the process and, and everything to get you more information, but this puts them on notice that this business in the offer.
What, and all I'm saying is, I will put that all comment since I, wait a second. In other words, is it, did it get turned up by the tornado?
No.
Good.
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, oh, we're good.
This, this isn't someone drive your, what's it called, this is, this is the fire department drive your, expanded, approved the government, the legal area, uh, I understand that, and.
There you go.
Is your good work, Tom? Twenty-six.
This is, looks like it's just, uh, uh, some trees, so, you know.
It is, yeah. All right, um.
Private judge.
You move it, Sheila? Sheila move it, second, Joe second, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, and, uh, that carries us on to, you have any other?
The only thing is, uh, we're still waiting on guidance on the, uh, the American Recovery Act, and, uh, once we get that, but we're, we're working, uh, we have, we're working to be ready once we get the funds and once we get the guidance to move forward.
Same process as before?
Yes. Yes.
What, what, what are we anticipating, though?
And we already take the treasury about when that, when that coming? When will that start date be? Don't keep that to yourself, it's sixty days.
You have to apply for, they haven't even sent us the paperwork to apply.
Did you check the bank account? About this, then you're gonna do that. Do that.
Richard, all right, my name is, Mr. Dixon, are you online?
I am, good morning.
Good morning.
We have our item number one, which are unusual demand report, item two and three. And four are our normal purchasing agenda report, uh, are there any questions about those items?
I'm going to motion four, have a motion four through four.
Second.
All the better please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Under Budget Management Office, we have our multiple staff development and our individual staff development.
Have a motion, have a second.
Sir.
All the better please say aye.
Aye.
Now, what's this sheriff, uh, this, the RSO officers, okay, that is what the T A A S R O, okay. All right, uh.
Item number.
Go ahead.
Under item number two, for information only, we have an, um, a budget amendment for, um, EMA to draw down, um, fund balance to cover, um, uh, overtime and upgraded telephone system, and I think, um, Mr. Coker is on the line, if he have any additional questions related to that item.
So, have a motion.
So, move.
Have a motion, go to the second.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, all the better please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you.
All right, Board of Red Stars, Mr. Harris Stevenson, you got a couple of changes you wanna discuss first?
Yes, uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, after every major election cycle, we, uh, always, all of those, all of us involved in elections, specifically for Red Stars, look at how can we make the process better, make it more efficient. We always moved up, moving some precincts, splitting some precincts, and, uh, we're getting that process now, there's several in the pipeline. I talked to most of you all about things that are, um, happening or, or gonna be coming forth in your districts. This is what we have now, uh, we have the relocation in, in the Sandusky area, the, the senior citizen center has closed. It did not make it through pandemic, so, City Birmingham, we got a very good relationship with the Park and Red Board, so we're moving this to the Sandusky Hudson, uh, Community Center with a pretty new facility, it's very nice out there on Grant Road. Uh, also, uh, number two, this is in District Five, um, we're moving from Horizon to Shades Mountain. This is gonna be a big improvement for the voters there, much more parking, much more accessibility from several different directions. And then the third one is, is a name change, McIlwain, uh, still, we're still being there, this is just a name change. Uh, for church, we can properly recognize that and get everyone, everybody mailed a, an update and a card identifying the new name, so. Which is associated with Shades Mountain, uh, Shade, they're in a, uh, uh, association agreement with Shades Mountain. Shades Mountain, I believe, is, uh, um, bringing them under the ministry, and so. Uh, yeah, so, uh, but I plan to follow up with them in the next week, next week, uh, where they are on that, so we can get moving on that. Also talk to Becky.
Person, person pretty quick, the judge, the county sheriff, so.
Really?
Have a motion, second. Better please say aye.
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 Okay. Given resources, we have, uh, Ms. Brown, you want to present?
Hello? Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Our first, um, item for consideration is establishing this our internship payment. Um, so we have three steps that are presented, one for, um, high school students for twelve dollars per hour. Um, step two is for college undergraduates for fifteen dollars per hour, and then for college graduates, um, step three for twenty dollars per hour. The second item for consideration is our employment agreement, um, for the Deputy Director of Environmental Services, that's just an extension of a contract. And then the third is our annual software lifetime track.
Will it go to that wastewater program? Are you getting, uh, is anything ticking up now?
Well, it's still early, our application deadline is, um, April ninth, um, but Ms. Warren is also on the line. Ms. Warren, do we have any activity as of yet?
Good morning, commissioners, thank you Caroline, um, I hope everyone can hear me. We have had some responses, we've reached out to all of the schools that were on that target list. Um, I think because of spring break is going on for some of those, um, school districts, we think that we'll get an uptick in responses after spring break. We've had a couple of schools to reach back out to us wanting to do, um, presentations with them around the water reclamation internship program, um, after spring break, I think the schools are Parker and Harbor High School, so we plan to do that. Um, so we think that there will be an uptick in responses and applications after spring break and before the deadline.
Okay, Laura, Paul P, I'll volunteer to go to the beach and hand out flyers to all the spring breakers. All right. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. All right, Personnel Board, Jefferson Kenner, revised resolution to dispose of. Board assets?
Move it.
Have a motion.
Second.
All the better please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, real quickly, uh, just wanna say, our team, or my roads and transportation department, in, in the last seven weeks, have just done a remarkable job in response to both of these storms, and that's not me just saying that to puff it up, that's what I'm hearing from the first responders, from the fire departments, from the public works people out there, that they are Johnny on the spot, they get in there, they get it done, and they get those roads cleared, which is paramount to any kind of a storm. Shady Grove had the, I think it was classified as a EF one, it skipped over all of EF zero. In Northland Gardenville, Ontario, it was EF zero two.
The photo on Shady Grove Road, you couldn't even tell, you couldn't see any asphalt, it was just, uh, just trees and.
I know. And it's, now all those, what was said, all those trees were piled up, so, you know, I guess, other, got a little bit of work to do. Uh, final thing, uh, I'd like to, uh, somehow formally reach out, uh, and send our condolences to Lawrence County Commission on the loss of, uh, Mr. Joey Hartgrove, who was killed in an accident, uh, just a few days ago, so, we can do that somehow, I don't know.
There's also a commissioner that passed away from Wilcox, recently.
Okay. I said we can. In Montgomery, yeah. Seat counselor, in Montgomery, yeah. Okay, well, that is my report, and I'll have some other things to say on some of the tornado stuff on Thursday.
All right.
Good morning.
Yeah, Information Technology Economic Development, uh, with IT, Shree, to discuss items one and two.
Good morning, commissioners, uh, we have two items for conservation and agenda this morning. The first one is for Dell EMC Services Pro Deployment, for our conversion from Windows seven to Windows ten computers. And also, second one is for our express travel connectivity for disaster recovery, and both have been in the budgeting account for this fiscal year.
Have a motion or a second?
Second. All the folks say aye. Any opposed?
All right, oh.
I have a question.
Yes.
Not about, not about this, but about our, our computers.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, um, Shree, they, eh, do we, do we have a problem with the network? Our, our computers have been, or our computers in my office have been exceptionally slow, but, I mean, uh, like dial-up slow almost.
Uh, your desktop computer, or is it your, your laptop?
No, it's my desktop, the one that's hardwired into the, into the server.
Uh, we're, do not, we don't have any kind of network connectivity, there could be some issues if it's a laptop with a wireless, but we'll definitely check on that, Commissioner, and make sure that it's being taken care of.
I don't think that I'm the only one. We spend a lot of quality time watching that little circle go around.
Okay, we, we will have someone right there this morning and take a look at all your computers.
And I think it's, yeah, I think it's, um, I think it's all of us down there, I mean.
Yeah, and, and a bandwidth issue.
Yeah.
There, there'll be, there'll be times in the middle of Zoom meeting or Teams meeting where it will slow down or, or freeze up.
So, sometimes I wanna tell Zach, go out and turn the antenna, you know?
Yeah.
And, or, or try, try another AOL line, I believe what it looks like. Hang up, hang up the phone, try another AOL, my AOL works a lot better.
All right, Shree, thank you.
Do you have the, your question or something?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have one other item, uh, a board of co-chair for Kewaca, uh, Jack Williams. Um, Kewaca is, um, a seven county, uh, region, um, and, uh, their recommendation was for, uh, Jack Williams.
I do have a question. Now, we can go ahead and move that.
Second.
Second.
All right, uh, motion second, all the folks please say aye.
Aye. Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's only one point to this particular board, am I correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
All right, so, can you tell me what RC and D Council, what do those acronyms stand for?
RC and D?
Uh-huh.
That's a good question.
So, what I'm, what I'm looking at, it says is Resource Conservation and Development Council. Uh, but I, I wanna, I can tell it's an economic development.
Well, it's, it's.
Just trying to figure out what exactly it's.
It's economic development, but it's really more about, um, environmental, economic development, just thrown around. Um, it's more, uh, uh, like, than was involved with them when I was on city council, where they did a stream restoration project and helped facilitate along with, um, state and local, um, redevelopment that stream for, you know, environmental purposes as well, so it does a little bit of both, um, and it covers Walker one, Cherry Shelby, Short. Um, and, uh, they, they, uh, asked for, for them to take it along.
No, I just, I, I was, I'm, I've never heard of that company, and just wanted to have some intelligence on it.
Commissioner, when, when I was mayor, we, they also helped water projects.
Yeah. It's, it's. What kind of water projects do they help with?
They, they'll do reclamation, they would do, uh, lights.
Like your black was, um.
Like where I was going with.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, but yeah, yeah, I mean, that, stuff like that, helping, helping they clear it out, um, uh, the project and.
Do they have any funds?
They do, they have grant, grant, um, grant funds, they're serving to do, but they're also able to leverage ones to the state and federal, federal government as well. Um, and, uh, kind of, kind of help, uh, uh, bring, bring all the parties together to do.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'll be honest with you, I, it's a, it's a weird thought, uh, not necessarily a weird thought, but how, as I was reading it, some things came to mind in terms of, um, how they can be beneficial, even, that's another way to say it.
Well, and I knew, uh, Jack would be, would, would be helpful, um, having been in the legislature, he has the availability, and he's worked with him before on a project.
Yes, that was in his district.
He'd be good with it. Uh, I do have another question for you, Steve.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mayor Julio Davis called, uh, yesterday, had a conversation with him. They are developing an interchange there on I twenty-two, and they're looking, uh, they, they have, uh, a sewer that is about three thousand people wide, it's, it's, it's a good way, and I think we had a meeting, uh, three, four months ago, and they need to get with E S D to determine if it is feasible, and, and what they need to do to make sure that, uh, they can do their development.
What city, did you say, right, uh?
Grantsville. I thought they ran the sewer to the I twenty-two.
They've written, they, it's still, or do they just, or do they just? I think they just went.
They better, you still want?
What?
Yeah, we've got a couple of crossings there, but they're not connected.
Okay, so you just, uh.
Yeah, just to get into the interstate before it came through, so, uh, we, we've got a couple of, uh, down towards the sort of, um, Forest Dale, that, on the line, man, down there, we've got some crossing, some actual sewer there, so.
Yeah, this is one of the.
Yeah, we've got some, more details we can look at.
Yeah, and, and we need to do it because, good gracious, uh, I twenty-two is gonna start developing all these interchanges, and I don't know what it's gonna take to, to get it done, there's, I think they can do one of the developments with, with a local, but they really do need to get with you, and if you'll be receptive, I'll give, uh, the mayor and that kind of developer up there, and perhaps Commissioner Adams can send someone to, to represent that when we can get this started.
Look at the exit, because there's, I know the, um, border tracker was on a, the excavation was interesting.
Yeah.
Um, so, that, and that area is pretty, pretty rocky, and, uh, starting out, but, um, I twenty-two is, is, is right.
So they can get in behind, behind us, David and Kimberly. All right. Our, our, you know, if we got six million dollars to spend on building old bikes, and, and we ought to, we ought to, we ought to kind of find it with the cream.
That was my question.
Any other?
No.
Uh, for now. Got any, attorney?
Go.
I'd like to thank Charles Tyler, the lead manager, he's done a real good job, we just had an auction in Montgomery Hill, have a presentation coming up at the next meeting for y'all, but, boy, he's been working really hard and done the county a good job.
Oh, I do have one, one thing, um, weather alert Thursday. Oh, I do have one, one thing, um, weather alert Thursday, um, Thursday is, uh, a moderate risk. There's a, a call with National Weather Service here at ten o'clock.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was actually trying to, to get every, everyone.
You have nothing to say?
No, we're good, we're, we, uh, we, uh, you know, we went from the category last time from, um, being moderate, and then we ended up with a beer.
Yeah, in the manner of that.
And we had, I think, twenty-four tornadoes in the state that day. Yeah. And it's twenty-six now.
We had two.
Few degrees warmer and a little more, less rain, they got it for that, they got it for that, that tornado there that he, he did from the northeast that night. We are adjourned, and the governor's proclamation to be updating to twenty-seven is considered, anyone? Whether that is just a, a further explanation of, um, safer, I don't know.